Hey everybody, hello and welcome to the Shelby Township Board of Trustees meeting here on April 21st, 2020. Tonight, we are broadcasting to you from various locations by way of video conferencing. The format is very different, and I do apologize in advance for any technical issues that we may have here tonight. Um, I don't think we'll have any though, because we've got Nick Monacelli at the control. Uh, he's actually, uh, the production guy and he's doing a great job. So if you have any, uh, ideas to put, complaints, Nick's the guy. Thanks Nick, good job on everything. Um, we're all working together. We're all working together to, um, township services for residents during these very trying times. As we work through our challenges, we remember that there are many of our neighbors and friends and family members suffering through much more tonight than what we can ever imagine. And let us also remember our friends and neighbors who are working harder than ever to maintain our society and support our families. And I'm always impressed by the support our township shows for our first responders with the Shelby Township Police and Fire Departments. And it's no surprise that support has only grown during these times. And I want to thank all the residents and Shelby Township for supporting our first responders as well as all of our healthcare workers and other people going to work every day to keep us safe. All of us are in this together and we all have a role to play to navigate through this very complicated crisis. At Township Hall, rest assured that we, our Board of Trustees and our more than 300 employees will continue to meet and exceed or exceed your expectations, coronavirus or not. And please know also that we feel very thankful and blessed to be doing our part. So with this in mind, I'd like to start with the invocation. If you want to bow your heads. Dear Lord, please watch over all of our men and women who work protecting others. We pray for police officers, firefighters, the Department of Public Works, healthcare professionals, clergy, grocery store workers, postal workers, delivery drivers, and all people who selflessly maintain their pulse to ensure our safety and comfort during these times. We pray that they may have safe shifts and come home to their families every night and that you safeguard them from any harm and illness. We pray that through all the trials they see, that they remain compassionate and caring toward all. And please put our end to this illness and suffering and deepen our faith as you call us to trust in you through this crisis, uh, as like you do at all times, in Jesus' name, Amen. Let's stand for the pledge.
And one nation.
Mr. Groot, please take the roll call.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, Lisa Casali. Michael Flynn. Stanley Groth here. Rick Stafford.
Here.
John Vermulon.
Here.
Vince Viviano.
Here.
Elena Wilhelm. All present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Next, we'll do the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda that has been presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve consent agenda as follows. Minutes Board Meeting, March 17th, 2020. Special Board Meeting, April 2nd, 2020. To approve, minutes is presented.
What's happening?
E, extension of municipal water service installation and system repair contract. Move to concur with the recommendation Director of Public Works, David Miller, and extend the current water service installation and system repair contract for 90 days after the municipal offices are officially open to the public. And C, cancellation of May 5th, 2020 regular board meeting. Move to cancel the regular meeting of Board of Trustees for May 5th, 2020. And bill run in the amount of $1,62,838.53. Move to approve the bill running at amount. And Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, and by the way, before anybody makes a second, if anyone wants to make a second, just put your hand up and then, um, I'll call on you for a second. Okay, so motion made by Mr. Groot, seconded by Mr. Vermulon. Any comment? Um, okay, we'll go ahead and take a roll call.
Stanley Groth, yes. John Vermulon?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Michael Flynn? Michael Flynn?
He's muted. Michael's muted.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. And Rick Stafford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Monacelli, can you please put the agenda up? Okay, the first agenda item will be the Saw Grant Extension. Gordy Wilson from AEW's a fantastic [BLEEP]. For a point there, um, it was questionable whether or not we could. So we'll talk more about that, or he will. Number two, Bill Morton for Leo Brown Group. To us about, um, proposing a psychiatric hospital on parcel number 2307361026. Number three, resolution addressing the state of Michigan response to. Number four. Number seven, 911 Communication Technician, new hire in the police department. Number eight, sidewalk ordinance amendment and amendment to Chapter 46 General Provisions. Number nine, award of contract sidewalk maintenance services. Three minute amendment. Number 11, Van Dyke and North Central Intersection Signal Consideration. And number 12, the IT infrastructure upgrade. And then also have full session Steel Greve versus Shelby Township. Mr. Groot, I think I got everything?
You do, and I'm gonna make a motion to approve [BLEEP] presented.
What up?
Okay, go ahead, uh, Mr. Groot, you made a, uh, motion. Somebody second, please. Would anyone like to second? Just put your hand up. Okay.
Second.
By Mr. Groot, seconded by Ms. Wilhelm.
No, it's Mike Flynn.
Take a roll call for all votes tonight. So go ahead and call the votes, Mr. Groot.
Uh, Stanley Groth, yes. Mike Flynn actually made a motion, I believe. Uh, seconded, pardon me, seconded.
Yes.
Uh, Rick Stafford?
Yes.
John Vermulon? John Vermulon?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm? Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, very much. Residents, now is your opportunity to address a board regarding any of the items on the agenda this evening. Your comments, um, pursuant to board policy are limited to three minutes. Please keep in mind that while the scope of your discussion at this point of the meeting should be limited to agenda items, you will also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to discuss a wider range of topics that relate to township business. Anyone from the public? Mike Flynn, now is your time. Okay, once, twice. Okay, move on. First agenda item, the Saw Grant Extension with this first item, our township engineers, AEW. Gordy Wilson. Mention of the Saw Grant Program. To middle, we do on March 20th, 2020. The Department of Environmental Energy has agreed to extend that deadline of June 1st, 2020. Due to the good work of AEW, specifically Gordy Wilson. We thank you for that Gordy. Given the impact of COVID-19, it makes sense to the township to review the asset management plan prior to the submission of the Saw Grant application. May I have a motion?
Mr. Supervisor?
Ms. Casali?
I move to receive and file the Saw Grant Extension as presented.
Art. Report by, uh, Ms. Casali made the motion, supported by Mr. Viviano. Any discussion? I just want to say, um, Gordy, I know you put a lot of, uh, work into this. Is there anything you want to say? Wait, wait. Okay, now go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say we had a lot of discussion with Dave Miller in the DPW. And in light of the circumstances and the value of this tool to the community, long-term, we felt that it was important that we get an extension that is thoroughly understood by all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Stanley Groth, yes. Rick Stafford?
Yes.
John Vermulon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Our next item here, we're asked to give consideration to the applicant's request for a special land use for a proposed senior, um, psychiatric hospital located on the east side of Shainer, south of 21 Mile Road. The site is little more than two acres and is currently zoned office service. The planning commission held a public hearing on March 9th, 2020 and unanimously voted the special land use. Motion, please.
Mr. Supervisor?
Ms. Wilhelm?
I move to concur with Planning Commission and approve special land use site plan number 2006. Bill Morton for Leo Brown's Group proposing a geriatric psychiatric hospital on parcel number 230736100026. Based on the following, the proposed use of the site for a geriatric psychiatric hospital is consistent with the development pattern in that area. The development of this site will not interfere or discourage the development of a budding property. And the submission of a revised site plan is required incorporating applicable review comments from township departments and engineer.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Wilhelm, seconded by Mr. Flynn. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Vermulon?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Julie. Julie, uh, the question I have for you is who's the primary target market of this? Is this gonna be a forensic psychiatric, uh, facility? Or will this be something go where people suffer from depression and other mental issues?
Mr. Vermulon, um, this is, um, these people will be coming from nearby hospitals or primary care physicians, psychiatric and psycho, psychologists with majority coming from skilled nursing facilities. So, um, there, this will be an inpatient facility, 23 beds. The average length of stay according to the applicant is, um, from 12 to 15 days. Kind of a, like a short-term rehabilitation center. All the patients will be 65 and older and, um, for the most part, they will be, you know, the patients will be transferred to this hospital, not by emergency purposes per se. But they will be, um, patients that are suffering from depression, acute cognitive confusion related to dementia or Alzheimer's. While the primary diagnosis of these patients will be psychiatric, the program would be able to treat those with the common, you know, secondary issues related to these types of illnesses.
So essentially, it's not dealing with the criminally mentally ill, it's dealing with people who have Alzheimer's, dementia and other associated issues, suicidal for that reason.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, any other, um, comments, discussion? Okay, Mr. Groot, please take roll call.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Stanley Groth, yes. Rick Stafford? John Vermulon?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Item number three, resolution addressing the state of Michigan.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Stanley Groth and I have asked the board to consider this next item. With this resolution, the Township Board tonight is asked to send a message to our governor that we do support executive orders that will serve to reduce the spread of COVID-19 virus so that the curve may be flattened. However, many of the items in a governor's order are examples of her going a bit too far in terms of restrictions that will not serve to meaningfully slow the spread of the virus. Instead, Michigan should adopt standards that align with a centered disease control to mitigate the transmission of the virus. People should be able to garden, buy garden supplies, plant their spring gardens, or buy a can of paint to touch up work in compliance with the CDC rules. Governor Whitmer has, um, should issue a new public health executive order. U.S. Representative Paul Mitchell has stated this position publicly, and I would agree, and I know Mr. Groot does too, and that's why we are addressing the board tonight. Tonight, we are asking the board to consider and pass this resolution in support of laying out an executive order that is more in line with what the federal government recommends. Our residents in Shelby Township deserve to have professional long care service when those companies are not responsibly following, or I should say, when those companies are act responsibly and do indeed follow federal rules. Board, tonight, I hope you will consider supporting this resolution this evening. Who would like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to, uh, approve a resolution addressing the state of Michigan's response to COVID-19.
Second, the part.
Motion made by Mr. Groot, seconded by Ms. Casali. Uh, Mr. Groot, is there anything I missed that you would like to add?
Well, I, I think we can read the resolution. I, Laura White is ready to, uh, to read the text of the resolution, so, uh, let's call on Laura White. And, uh, uh, let's, uh, let's put that out there in, now, in, in language that is written.
Okay, Ms. White, if you could please read the resolution in its entirety. Thank you.
Resolution addressing the state of Michigan's response to COVID-19 and the request to the governor's office to consider an amendment to the Executive Order 2020-42. Whereas on March 10th, 2020, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services identified the first two presumption positive cases of COVID-19 in Michigan. And whereas in response to the spread of COVID-19 in the state of Michigan, Governor Gretchen Whitmer on March 10th, 2020 issued Executive Order 2020-4 declaring a state of emergency across the state of Michigan. Under Section 1, Article 5 of the Michigan Constitution of 1963, the Emergency Management Act, MCL 30 dash, I'm sorry, 30.401 at SEQ and the Emergency Powers of the Governor Act of 1945, MCL 10.31 at SEQ. Whereas on March 23rd, 2020, the governor issued Governor's Executive Order 2020-21, Temporary Requirement to Suspend Activities That Are Not Necessary to Sustain or Protect Life, Order 2020-21. The stated purpose of Order 2020-21 was in relevant part to suppress the spread of COVID-19, to prevent the state's healthcare system from being overwhelmed, to allow the time for the production of critical test kits, ventilators, and personal protection equipment, and to avoid needless deaths. It is reasonable and necessary to direct residents to remain at home and in their place of residence to the maximum extent feasible. Whereas, on April 9th, 2020, the governor issued Order 2020-42, which essentially rescinded and restated Order 2020-21 and extended the stay-at-home mandate, Order 2020-42. While the stated purposes of the orders remained unchanged, Order 2020-42 places additional restrictions on those businesses which are deemed essential. For example, home improvement stores are allowed to stay open, but only to sell products necessary to maintain the safety, sanitation, and basic operations of residences. Requiring stores like Home Depot to close its paint section, flooring section, and outdoor gardening center and continue to restrict landscaping, lawn care, tree service, irrigation, and related outdoor maintenance companies from operating. Whereas, the Charter of Township of Shelby understands the gravity of the pandemic and the intent of the order to prohibit in-person work that is not necessary to sustain or protect life. Order 2020-42, Section 1, as well as the mandate that no person or entity shall operate a business or conduct operations that require workers to leave their homes or places of residence, except to the extent that those workers are necessary to sustain or protect life or to conduct minimum basic operations. Order 2020-42, Section 4. Whereas, as a result of the executive orders, Shelby Township residents, along with all Michigan residents, have complied with these orders in spite of the restrictions placed upon their ability to work outside their homes and earn a living to support themselves and their families. Many locally owned businesses have been forced to close, and more than 1 million people in the state of Michigan have filed for unemployment. Whereas, the Charter of Township of Shelby acknowledges that the initial terms of these executive orders were set forth to reduce the spread of COVID-19 virus and to flatten the curve of new cases in order to ease the strain. Upon the healthcare system, it also acknowledges the suggestion posed by members of the state legislature to consider an amendment to these orders designating business sectors of our society by a different classification, that of safe or unsafe, as more reasonable way to manage this public health challenge while avoiding further damage to our economy and the lives of the residents and business owners. Whereas, Shelby Township Police Department is fielding calls and responding to a wide range of essential services complaints, which causes a burden that makes it more difficult to respond to emergency matters and run routine crime prevention patrols. Whereas, U.S. Representative Paul Mitchell stated in part, "The governor should issue a public health order that aligns with the Centers for Disease Control Guidance to mitigate the transmission of the virus, rather than her current more restrictive arbitrary executive order." The CDC guidelines lay out a very specific steps to protect public health that were developed by experts. Businesses can ensure people remain six feet apart, properly sanitize, set up sneeze guards and protective barriers, promote proper hand washing and cleaning techniques for their employees, while also protecting customers with similar guidelines. People can buy gardening supplies to plant their spring gardens or buy a can of paint for touch-up work in compliance with the CDC guidance to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Instead of needlessly shutting down large sectors of the economy and further restricting the lives of residents, Whitmer should issue a new public health executive order and enforce the order upon those blatantly violating CDC guidelines. Detroit Free Press, April 4th, 2020. Whereas, the Charter of Township of Shelby is in support of the position to establish a revised public health order as suggested by the esteemed members within the United States Congress. Now therefore be it resolved, the Charter of Township of Shelby Board of Trustees hereby adopts this resolution as a record of its request to Governor Whitmer to consider the classifications or designations of essential businesses and amend parts of the Executive Order 2020-42 to provide for or allow certain businesses within the community who can adopt safe social distancing measures pursuant to strict health and safety guidelines as promulgated by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention to operate for those employees to safely return to the workforce.
Okay, thank you very much, Laura, and I would ask if there are any questions or comments. Now would be the time.
Uh, Mr. Supervisor, Laura, the Detroit Free Press article was, uh, written April 14th. You stayed at April 4th, so.
Okay.
That, that's a correction. Uh, everything looks good.
Thank you.
And I will say too, I think it was April 9th, it was a Thursday. I was on the phone, um, for eight, nine hours just with people wanting to cut lawns and, uh, that's really kind of what got this going. I know Mr. Groot had the same situation. And we were, they were calling you, they were calling me, and I know some of you got phone calls as well. So we promised them that we would do something, uh, in terms of resolution. So hopefully, I'm not gonna say this will suffice, but it will be a, um, a good step forward in letting the governor know she's, she's gone too far. Any other questions? Go ahead and we'll do a roll call. Thank you.
Stanley Groth, yes. Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Rick Stafford? John Vermulon?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
And Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. This next one, we have another resolution tonight in response to Governor, uh, State Home Safe, Safe Executive Order. This resolution is actually authored by Lisa Casali, Stan Groot, myself, and, um, we had Rob Huth, um, of course, write it. But this resolution covers a loophole that needs to be addressed by the governor. Currently, the order has restrictions placed on, and I quote, "non-essential medical and dental procedures," unquote. This portion of the order covers procedures such as dental cleanings and any other procedure that a dentist, a doctor, surgeon, or other licensed medical provider decides is not, quote, "necessarily address a medical emergency or to preserve the health and safety of a patient," unquote. Now, what is not covered by these restrictions are elective abortions, as a governor has done nothing. She's done nothing to interfere in these procedures despite their direct impact on the state's healthcare system. So this resolution is asking the governor to close this loophole and make sure that these procedures are not contributing to an increased burden on our healthcare system and a spread of COVID-19 virus.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I move to, uh, adopt the resolution to Charter, uh, Township of Shelby, Resolution, Abortion Not Essential.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion made by Mr. Groot, seconded by Mr. Vermulon.
And I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Laura White to, uh, to read that. It's, uh, it's quite lately, but I, I think it's important that it's read.
Yep. And before we do that, Ms. Casali, you have any comments, since you were one of the authors?
No, just in full agreement and, um, and supportive of our, we're suggesting, so.
Go ahead, Laura.
All right, resolution addressing the state of Michigan's response to COVID-19 and a request to the governor to issue new orders that state non-essential abortions procedures are not an essential service as previously defined in, I'm sorry, Executive Order 2020-17. Whereas, on March 10th, 2020, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services identified the first two presumption positive cases of COVID-19 in Michigan. And whereas, in response to the spread of COVID-19 in the state of Michigan, Governor Gretchen Whitmer on March 10th, 2020, issued Executive Order 2020-4 declaring a state of emergency across the state of Michigan under Section 1, Article 5 of the Michigan Constitution of 1963, the Emergency Management Act, MCL 30.401 at SEQ and the Emergency Powers of the Governor, Governor Act, 1945, MCL 10.31 at SEQ. Whereas, on March 20th, 2020, the governor issued Governor's Executive Order 2020-17, Temporary Restrictions on Non-Essential Medical and Dental Procedures, Order 2020-17. The stated purpose of Order 2020-17 was in relevant part to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, protect the public health, provide essential protections to vulnerable Michiganders, and ensure the availability of healthcare resources. It is reasonable and necessary to impose temporary restrictions on non-essential medical and dental procedures, emphasis added. Further, the Order 2020-17 defines a non-essential procedure as a medical or dental procedure that is not necessary to address as a medical emergency or to preserve the health and safety of a patient as determined by a licensed medical provider. Whereas, pursuant to Order 2020-17, certain healthcare businesses or operations are required to implement a plan to temporarily postpone all non-essential procedures. Whereas, on March 23rd, 2020, the governor issued Governor's Executive Order 2020-21, Temporary Requirement to Suspend Activities That Are Not Necessary to Sustain or Protect Life, Order 2020-21. The stated purpose of Order 2020-21 was. The stated purpose of Order 2020-21 was in revelant part to suppress the spread of COVID-19, to prevent the state's healthcare system from being overwhelmed, to allow time for the production of critical test kits, ventilators, and personal protection equipment, and to avoid needless deaths. It is reasonable and necessary to direct residents to remain at home or in their place of residence to the maximum extent feasible. Whereas, the first enumerated section of Order 2020-21 states that this order must be construed broadly to prohibit in-person work that is not necessary to sustain or protect life, Order 2020-21, Section 1, emphasis added. Section 5, whereas, Section 5 A and B logically defines those workers who are necessary to sustain or protect life as critical infrastructure workers, as those workers in healthcare and public health, but also require those businesses and operations to restrict in-person activities that are not necessary to sustain or protect life must be suspended until normal operations resume, Order 2020-21, Section 5 A, emphasis added. Whereas, on April 9th, 2020, the governor issued Order 2020-42, which essentially rescinded and restated Order 2020-21 and extended the stay-at-home mandate, Order 2020-42. Whereas, the effect of Order 2020-21 on healthcare businesses and operations was wide-ranging in impacts entities whether or not they meet the definition of covered facility, and as Order 2020-17 still remains in effect, it continues to impact the scope of procedures that health and care businesses and operations are required to postpone. Whereas, the Charter Township of Shelby understands the gravity of the pandemic and fully supports the intent of the order to prohibit in-person work that is not necessary to sustain or protect life, Order 2020-42, Section 1. Whereas, on March 14th, U.S. Surgeon General Jerome Adams tweeted the hospitals and healthcare systems should consider stopping elective procedures amid the COVID-19 outbreak. Whereas, on March 18th, the Centers for Medical and Medicaid Services, CMS, part of the Department of Health and Human Services that oversees hospitals and providers, released a recommended three-tier decision-making guidance document for hospitals entitled "Non-Emergent Elective Medical Services and Treatment Recommendations." The CMS urges hospitals and providers to consider these guidelines when limiting non-essential adult elective surgery and medical and surgical procedures, including all dental procedures. The stated purpose for the adoption of the guidelines is to aggressively address COVID-19. CMS recognizes that conservation of critical healthcare resources is essential. In addition to limiting exposure of patients and staff to the virus that causes COVID-19, CMS also recognizes the importance of reducing burdens on the existing health system and maintaining services while keeping patients and providers safe, emphasis added. Whereas, the Charter Township of Shelby also acknowledges that CMS-tiered guidelines also state, "When determining the risks and benefit of planned, any planned procedures, not only must the clinical situation be evaluated, but resource conservation must also be considered. But decisions remain the responsibility of local healthcare delivery systems and those surgeons who have direct responsibility to their patients." Whereas, relatedly, CMS National Coverage Determination, NCD, or abortion 140.1, may further establish a general precedent for situations or events when abortion is deemed essential and limits it to, 1) if the pregnancy is a result of an act of rape or incest, or in the case where a woman suffers from a physical disorder, physical injury, or physical illness, including a life-endangering physical condition caused by or arising from the pregnancy itself that would, as certified by a physician, place the woman in danger of death unless an abortion is performed. Whereas, the Charter Township of Shelby supports the argument for sanctified life from the moment of conception and supports a hospital's decision to ban non-essential abortion procedures during the state of emergency within the state of Michigan. Whereas, the Charter Township of Shelby further supports a general definition of an essential surgery as surgery that is required when there is a threat to a patient's life if the particular surgery or procedure is not performed. Whereas, non-essential surgical abortion procedures or elective surgical abortions require personal protection equipment and close contact between patients, doctor, and their staff that could very likely contribute to the spread of COVID-19. Whereas, the Charter Township of Shelby acknowledges the initial terms of these executive orders were set forth to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus and to flatten the curve of the new cases in order to ease the strain upon the healthcare system. Whereas, despite the intent of these executive order, Governor Whitmer is not inferring with the medical community when performing non-essential surgical abortion procedures. Whereas, the Charter Township is in support of the governor amending her executive orders to ban non-essential surgical abortions procedures during the state of emergency within the state of Michigan. Now therefore be it resolved, the Charter Township of the Shelby Board of Trustees hereby adopts this resolution as a record of its request to Governor Whitmer to amend executive orders to ban non-essential surgical abortion procedures during the state of emergency to address the COVID-19 pandemic.
Good job, Laura.
Thank you.
We do appreciate that. Basically, all we're saying is that unless there's a life endangered, some kind of condition as such, abortion is not medically necessary and should not be allowed during this crisis. That loophole should not be exploited, as we believe it is being exploited. So, any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
That was Jim.
I agree with the concept, Mr. Chairman, but I just, I think it's more a matter of fairness. If you're going to allow abortion, you should allow knee replacements, you should allow other procedures that are causing extreme discomfort, putting people in wheelchairs, et cetera, et cetera. So, a different side of the same coin. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Flynn. Anybody else? Mr. Vermeulen?
Yes. Yes, I'll tell you, I think that this points to the governor's poorly conceived notion of exactly what's necessary to people's health and what is not. And I'll tell you, I have a friend from high school, he's on a heart transplant list, he cannot even get the appropriate testing to make sure that when a recipient does come in, that he can get a heart from, it's not being done. Where is the concern for life in all this? It points to one more inconsistency that's just inappropriate with common sense, it's incompatible, and it's unconstitutional. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, real call, please.
Stanley Groat, yes. John Vermeulen?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
And Rick Stavikas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Groat, will those resolutions be sent to the governor when?
Tomorrow. We're going to, I'm going to, we're going to address it with Rob Huth, what's the best way to go about it, and we'll get them out tomorrow.
Okay. Overnight, email, and whatever else you can think of.
Not only that, but I think we need to put it out to the public
Oh, yeah?
in a form of press releases that we're not going to stand by overreach by our governor in, and misrepresenting what is really important to sustain life or what's not.
Can you please contact Brad Bates tomorrow so he can cover that in a couple releases?
Absolutely, I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number seven. Here, the Human Resources Director, Ms. Lisa Suda, and our Police Chief, Robert Schallide...
Hold on, hold on.
Missed a couple.
Hold on, Rick. Hold on, number five now.
Oh, sorry. Reopening the town... I'm going to let you take it from here. I know you're working on a plan to open our offices when that becomes time to do so, and would you like to expand on that? I know that we have a target date of either April 30th or March 1st, but that can change depending on the direction of the governor. Is there anything more?
Mr. Supervisor, board members, Joe Youngblood, Director of Parks and Recreation, and myself have been working for the past few days to put together a plan based on the township's needs and kind of working off of the federal Opening Up America Again Plan in phases. Mr. Youngblood has been working to secure the physical barriers and PPE, and I'm going to be working with department heads. So, this evening, the two of us are asking for your authorization for us to act on behalf of the township to get everyone back into the buildings, although we have been working all of this time. Mr. Youngblood, did you have anything to add?
I think you summed it up pretty well, Lisa, so thank you.
And Mr. Youngblood, I apologize for leaving you out unintentionally, but I know you've been working on some approaches to opening up the parks, very comprehensive, you showed me some of the plans, good job on that, and I know you have been talking about this and working on this for a couple weeks. But good job, everybody.
Thank you.
Motion. Yes, Ms. Casali?
Yes, I move to authorize the Human Resources Director and Parks, Recreation, and Maintenance Director to coordinate the effort to reopen township offices and facilities in compliance with the state of Michigan and federal Opening Up America Again guidelines.
Or, motion made by Mrs. Casali, seconded by Mr. Vermeulen. Any discussion? Okay, real call. Oh, yes, Ms. Suda. Okay. Real call, please.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
John Vermeulen?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Stanley Groat, yes. Rick Stavikas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you both, very much. Yeah, next item, our Human Resources Director, Mrs. Lisa Suda, is asking our board tonight to consider a revision to the job description for the Fleet and Service Coordinator. The revision includes changes to the job duties of the individual and adds a supervisory responsibility for the police cadet. Did I get that right, Ms. Suda?
Yes, you did.
Motion, please. Mr. Vermeulen? Go ahead, Mr. Vermeulen. Mr. Vermeulen?
Having problems with the audio.
Okay.
Do you want me to do it?
Um, one second. Mr. Vermeulen, can you hear me? I guess you can't hear me.
He muted?
I can't occasionally hear you, but my bandwidth is low right now, so I'm coming in and out.
You made a motion. Go ahead, you made a motion. No? Mrs. Casali, go ahead.
Sure. I move to concur with the recommendation of Human Resources Director Lisa Suda and approve the job description for the position of Cadet and Fleet Supervisor, formerly titled Fleet Service Coordinator, as presented, and to revise the pay rate for the position as negotiated per Article 2.3b of the Municipal Supervisory Employees Collective Bargaining Agreement as presented and effective April 1st, 2020, with the General Employees Civil Service Commission to be advised of said actions.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Casali, seconded by Mr. John Vermeulen. Real call, please. Any discussion? Questions? Mr. Groat?
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
John Vermeulen?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Stanley Groat, yes. Rick Stavikas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, our Human Resources Director, again, Mrs. Lisa Suda, and our Police Chief, Robert Schallide, are requesting the Township Board to approve one entry level 911 communication technician to fill one of the two vacancies in the department. The applicant has been selected from the current eligibility list, and a background investigation has been completed. If the Township Board approves tonight, the technician will begin as soon as possible. Motion, please.
Yes, I move to concur with the recommendation of Human Resources Director Lisa Suda and approve the hire of Christina Brown, a probationary entry-level 911 communication technician from the current 911 communication technician eligibility list. A background investigation has been completed, employment will commence effective on a date still to be determined. The selection of this individual is made in full compliance with all applicable regulations and procedures.
Okay.
Motion by Mrs. Casali, seconded by Mr. Vermeulen. Any discussion? Real call, please.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
John Vermeulen?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Stanley Groat, yes. Rick Stavikas?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, great. Next, our Building Director, Mr. Tim Wood, who's with us tonight, has asked the Board to consider an amendment to the sidewalk ordinance, and the ordinances in general. Mr. Wood worked with the Township Attorney to draft language that will allow for some flexibility in terms of deferrals for sidewalk installation and for the resolutions for those matters that end up at the district court. Would you like to add anything, Mr. Wood?
No, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Motion, please. Yeah, Mr. Viviano?
Chair, to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 58, Article 9 of the Charter Township of Shelby Code ordinances to revise the regulations regarding sidewalks within the township and to provide for a civil responsibility violation within the township, providing for repealer severity, penalties, and effective dates.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Viviano, seconded by Mr. Flynn. Any discussion? Okay, real call, please.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Yes. Michael, Stanley Groat, yes. Rick Stavikas?
Yes.
John Vermeulen?
Yes.
John Vermeulen?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
And Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. This next item, I thank you, Ms. Suda, for coming here tonight, we do appreciate your input. This next item is also on the agenda tonight at the request of our Building Department for Mr. Tim Wood. Mr. Wood is recommending that the township continue its relationship with the current contractor that has worked on sidewalk restoration projects for the township. On board, you may recall that this matter was out to bid, and a company of, I think it's called Luigi Ferlandi &amp; Son, was by far the lowest bidder. The township engineer and Mr. Wood have discussed contract and timelines and cleanup requirements with the contractor if this matter is approved tonight. And I will say, Mr. Wood, I know that there were some problems with this contractor, but given a low, low bid that he put in, we're going to try to work them out, is that correct?
Yes, we had, myself and the township engineer spent some time with the contractor, and we're satisfied that he is going to improve performance going forward.
Okay. Motion, please. Mrs. Casali, I'm glad you came to work tonight.
With the recommendation of township engineer and award sidewalk maintenance to Luigi Ferlandi &amp; Son Cement at an estimated cost of $134,692.75 for the carryover 2019 sidewalk maintenance program and the unit costs outlined in the bid for the 2020 sidewalk maintenance program. It is anticipated that total cost of the township will be $24,000, with the remainder of the cost to be reimbursed by property owners. Funds to cover township costs to be taken from capital improvement fund, item 427442967510.
Court.
Motion made by Mr. Flynn, seconded by Mr. Groat?
Lynn Wilhelm?
Thank you.
Mrs. Wilhelm, thank you. Okay, any discussion? Real call, please.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Stanley Groat, yes. Rick Stavikas?
Yes.
John Vermeulen?
Yes.
And Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Wood, I want to thank you for your hard work. I know this has been a long ordeal, and Mr. Gordy Wilson, thank you as well, but I think we've come to a good conclusion. Sounds like the sit-down you had with this contractor was a good one, and we'll find out soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, the cost-share agreement for Utica Estates. We're asked to consider a cost-sharing agreement with the Macomb County Department of Roads for road repairs on Utica Estates Drive. If approved tonight, the project will run from 21 Mile Road to Shadywood Court. The total cost of the improvements is approximately $966,000. The proposal we are considering is a 50% match by the township, and the other part of course will be paid by Macomb County Department of Roads. Gordy, did I get that right? Gordy, did I get that right? Motion, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Casali?
That was Ms. Wilhelm.
Ms. Wilhelm, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I move to concur with the recommendations of the township engineer and amend the cost-share agreement between the Charter Township of Shelby and the Macomb County Department of Roads for Utica Estates Drive from Twenty-One Mile Road to Shadywood Court for an estimated cost of three hundred and two thousand five hundred and four dollars to four hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and amend the budget accordingly.
Or? Motion made by Mrs. Wilhelm, seconded by, I think it was Mr. Vermulon?
Viviano.
Viviano, I'm sorry. By the way, Ms. Wilhelm, I'm sorry about missing you twice now. You're in.
That's okay.
I just asked Nick to move you down a little bit, so you're not so far up.
I'm right, right next to you.
You know, so we're just kind of going with it, rolling with the punches.
No problem.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, and by Mr. Viviano. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and please take your role.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Stanley Groth, yes. Rick Stafakis?
Yes.
John Vermulon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Gordy Wilson, I think you're on now. I was going to ask if you had any input, you want to add anything to what we just did? Because I know you worked hard on it.
No, I know we worked really well with the Macomb County Department of Roads, they were very helpful in this. The project started off with trying to maintain the existing drainage system, it was very flooded. In your package, I had shown drainage, if you want, I can share that with the public or we can go on to, go through a screen.
I think it's pretty funny and extraordinary that the deal was made out in a parking lot, but I wouldn't. I mean, hey, really? Thank you very much. Okay. Next, the Van Dyke and North Central Park intersection signal here, request of our township engineer, we are asked to consider approval for a traffic signal at the intersection of Van Dyke and North Central Park. The cost for the installation of the traffic light will be in excess of three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. There is no cost to the township, however, the board will receive a proposed maintenance agreement from the county which will require the township to pay an estimated two thousand dollars per year toward the cost of maintaining the signal. Do I have that right, Mr. Miller? Is it two thousand dollars per year, correct? Yes? Okay. Motion by Mr. Flynn.
Concur with the recommendation of township engineer and select mass armed signalization for the Van Dyke Avenue and North Central Park intersection, and advise the Department of Roads to begin approval process and create a cost-share agreement for board approval.
Or? Motion made by Mr. Flynn, seconded by, was that you, Mr. Viviano?
Yes.
Okay, got it right. Any discussion? How did John Vermulon move to the corner? He was right there the whole time. Can you put Ms. Wilhelm here where I can see her? I can't move, never mind, okay. Speak very loudly, Ms. Wilhelm, when you want to make a motion.
Oh, you're fine, don't worry, no worries.
Anyway, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Stanley Groth, yes. Rick Stafakis?
Yes.
And John Vermulon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Gordy Wilson from AEW, thank you very much. Nice job on both of these. Very nice, thank you. Next, with this item tonight, based on what we asked to consider a capital improvement plan, what was considered, that's been suggested by our IT professional, Beth Case. If approved tonight, this project will include backup hardware, backup software, and an update for implementation services. Since many employees are working remotely due to the COVID-19 virus, this is a matter that should be, should not be delayed, and should move forward as soon as possible. Motion? Mrs. Casali?
I move to concur with the recommendation of Beth Case and upgrade the infrastructure systems of the township at a cost of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Casali and seconded by Ms. Wilhelm, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, or take a vote, please.
Lisa Casali?
Yes.
Lynn Wilhelm?
Yes.
Michael Flynn?
Yes.
Stanley Groth, yes. Rick Stafakis?
Yes.
Rick Stafakis?
Yes.
John Vermulon?
Yes.
Hello, John?
John?
Yes.
Vince Viviano?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that ends the agenda, we have just gone through it, thank you very much. I presume there are no township announcements, and listen, John, you have some. Seriously, does anybody have any announcements?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody stay safe.
Right.
Amen to that, everybody stay safe is right.
Yeah.
Okay, so now it's time for our business from the floor, we conduct township business here consistent with the way, here each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to discuss business that's relevant to the operation of our. If anyone, if you have any.
Mom's not making it for the sleep. You want to put one pack in?
Okay.
I'm going to go back.
Okay, now, thank you very much, board members, and now I'd like to hear a vote.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Yes. I have a question here, I just sent an email prior to the meeting regarding a question for the agenda, and I did not hear those questions answered.
Who was on the call? Excuse me, who was on the call?
Grant Glosso?
That's correct.
Grant Glosso. I already sent an email in prior. Go ahead, Grant.
So, my question was regarding, I believe it was agenda item number nine, let me go back my email here. I only did what was instructed by the Shelby Township website, so let me go back and look. My question is, how many bidders were there for the sidewalk contracts? Who were they? And do any children or family members of board members work for the selected contractor?
That it? That's the only question you have? A minute tonight, not to my knowledge, does anybody have any family members? I don't think any of them, yes.
No. No, I don't even know.
Any members associated with that contractor? If they do, speak up now. No one's speaking up? And I think that's it, I think I've answered your question. Thank you very much. Anyone else tonight? Okay, the business from the floor, I'll close, and now we will go into closed session. I would like a motion, please.
Make a motion to go on closed session?
Okay, motion made, is there anything you want to add to the motion, Mr. Hoot?
I just wanted to further respond to the question that was submitted a minute ago regarding the number of bids on the sidewalk.
Right, yes, yes.
There were, there were quite a few bids last year in two thousand and nineteen for the sidewalk project, and that contract at those prices was extended for this year. So, was bid, we received proposals, and then that was in nineteen, extended to twenty, so I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
If I would be allowed to, we had two bids on the project, Luigi Fernandi and Great Lakes Contracting on it, and there was a two thousand dollar difference between the bidders.
Say that again, we didn't hear you.
We had Luigi Fernandi and Son Cement Company bid on the project, and Great Lakes Contracting on the project, and Luigi was the low bidder by far, and was interviewed.
Mr. Wood, I know you were on that as well, do you have any input?
No, I just concur that, I'm looking at the bid tabulations right now, two contractors, Luigi Fernandi, Great Lakes Contracting, there was, Great Lakes Contracting was seventy-five percent higher than the low bidder, Luigi Fernandi.
Okay. Okay, let's go back. Mr. Hoot, add anything to the motion?
Nothing to the motion regarding closed session.
The motion was made by Mr. Viviano, and seconded by whom?
John Vermulon.